Residential district for multifamily, ten units, to be located on a certain parcel of land, lying and being in Indian River Hundred Sussex County, containing .84 acre, more or less. Properties lying on the northwest side and the southeast side of Oak Orchard Road, which is Route Five, approximately three hundred feet east of River Road, which is Sussex County Route Three Hundred and Twelve. The nine-one-one address is three-two-seven-six-eight Oak Orchard Road, Millsboro, and the tax parcel ID is District Two Thirty-four MAP thirty-five-point-zero-nine parcel six-point-zero-zero. Submitted into the record, Mr. Chairman, we have a copy of the applicant's conceptual site plan, a copy of the applicant's exhibit booklet, a copy of the applicant's engineering evaluation report, we have a copy of a letter received from the Sussex County Engineering Department Utility Planning Division, we have copies of notices of decisions for prior conditional uses, and it's CU Ten Eighty-eight and CU Eighteen Sixty-three. We have a copy of the staff analysis, we have a copy of the Del Dot service level evaluation response, we have a copy of the applicant's plus response, we have a copy of the legal description, we have a copy of the plus comments, we have a copy of the applicant's wetland statement, and the applicant's ninety-nine-nine-C response. I would note we have received all letters in opposition. Thank you.
All right, shall we thank you? Mr. Feuqua, a doubleheader today.
Yes, again, for the record, my name is Jim Feuqua. I'm an attorney in Georgetown, and I'm representing the applicant, Lassard Builders. With me is or are Brian Lassard of Lassard Builders, and Zach Crouch of Davis, Bowen, and Fidel. As was stated, there was an exhibit book submitted, contains information about the application, it includes the architectural renderings of the proposed buildings, and again, some additional information. This is a conditional use application for a multifamily building containing ten residential units that would be held in a condominium form of ownership. Lassard Builders is the contract purchaser of the land, and the land is owned by Andrew and Carol Walton, and they purchased the property in two thousand and eight. Jamie, could you just stick with the area or the tax map, either one? Yeah, it's good and a little unfocused. The property is located in Oak Orchard. It has frontage on Indian River Bay of approximately one hundred and thirty feet. It has a depth of approximately three hundred and sixty feet, and contains thirty-six thousand six hundred and sixty square feet, or approximately .84 acres of land. The property is zoned MR, as is most of the area surrounding the site, and then that MR area is actually surrounded by Land Zone GR and a number of other parcels that are zoned C-one. As provided in the zoning ordinance, in the MR zoning district, multifamily structures may be permitted as a conditional use. Under the two thousand and nineteen county comprehensive plan, the site is located in the coastal area, which is one of the growth areas designated in the comprehensive plan. The plan further states that in the coastal area, a range of housing types should be permitted, including multifamily units, and that medium and higher density of four to twelve units per acre can be appropriate at certain locations. So as I'm going to try to explain as we go through this presentation, we believe that this site is a location where the multifamily higher density would be appropriate. Just some specifics, central water for domestic use and fire protection will be provided by Tide Water Utilities, Inc., who already provides public water in this area. Central sewer will be utilized as part of the county's Oak Orchard sanitary sewer district. The county engineering department comments stated January thirteenth indicate that the site is in the sewer district, and that wastewater capacity is available for the proposed ten multifamily units. There are no title or non-title wetlands located on the site. The site, as well as most of the area surrounding the site, is located in the special flood hazard area zone under the FEMA maps. New construction in this zone requires compliance with FEMA coastal construction standards, as are implemented through the county building code. The proposed building design and base floor elevations will meet or exceed those requirements, and will fully comply with Article eighteen of the zoning ordinance regarding construction in flood-prone districts. Stormwater management facilities will be constructed in accordance with DENREC sediment and stormwater regulations, and will be reviewed and approved by the Sussex Conservation District. There is no stormwater management on the site at the current time. The proposed building and the site itself will comply with all applicable requirements of the Delaware State Fire Marshal's Office. The plans will also be reviewed and approved by that office. The proposed building will have a sprinkler system, and the applicant will consult with Tide Water Utilities to determine if adequate water pressure is available to place a hydrant in this area. There is public water in this area, there are no hydrants in the area, which is probably due to the pressure. If a hydrant can't be placed in the area, then a dry hydrant or hydrants would be installed on the site. Del Dot's review of the service level evaluation request stated that based on the projected traffic generation, a traffic impact study was not warranted, and that the traffic impact would be considered negligible. Entrance to the improvements to the parking area will be designed and constructed in compliance with Del Dot standards, and the site is located in the Indian River School District and fire service area of the Indian River Volunteer Fire Company. The fire company station number one is actually located on a site on Oak Orchard Road, just a few blocks from this site. Now, the reason we believe that this site is an appropriate location for the proposed use is basically, and to a large extent, based on the land use history of the property. So this gets into a bit of a history discussion. In nineteen ninety-four, a conditional use application for this property was filed with the county proposing a two-story building with a bait and tackle shop, a sandwich shop, and a marina office on the first floor, and a residence on the second floor. In addition to that, there would be a fishing and crabbing pier and boat slips for twenty boats, which would be rented to the general public. The minutes of that planning and zoning commission hearing indicate that the site had previously been the location of the Oak Orchard Hotel and Restaurant, and that the hotel and the restaurant apparently had this pier, five-hundred-and-twenty-foot pier that's extending out into the Indian River Bay. I know there's some residents from the area here, and they're probably much more familiar with the history of Oak Orchard than I am, but from what I know, I suspect this hotel probably dated back to the time when Oak Orchard and Riverdale were popular resort destinations along the bay there. The old hotel had fallen into disrepair, and it was actually torn down in nineteen eighty-six. Now, that requested conditional use was approved by the county council in September of nineteen ninety-four, and that is designated as conditional use Ten Eighty-eight. In two thousand and ten, a second conditional use application was filed by Mr. and Mrs. Walton, the current owners, who had purchased the property in two thousand and eight. That application proposed moving the existing building on the site, which was located on the, well, it's the building right there, on the waterfront portion of the site, to the northern end or other end of the property, and converting that building into a single-family residence. Where that building is located on the waterfront portion of the site, it was being proposed to build a new three-story building that would have four multifamily residential units on the second and third floors, and each of those units would contain approximately two thousand square feet, a floor area. And then on the first floor of this new building would be a two-thousand-eight-hundred-square-foot restaurant with a seven-hundred-square-foot waterfront patio and a sixteen-hundred-square-foot retail store. The new building would have a thirty-foot front setback from the bulkhead, the patio would have a twenty-foot setback from the bulkhead, and there would be a boardwalk between the patio and the bulkhead. On the existing pier, there would be ten boat slips at the end of the pier that would be available for lease to the general public, and on the north side of the property would be thirty parking spaces for the proposed uses. So the commission unanimously recommended approval of that application, and the county council did unanimously approve it in June of two thousand and ten, and that conditional use is designated as CU number eighteen sixty-three. Now, from viewing the site, you can see that none of that proposed construction was ever done. And without going into details, I'm just going to tell you that the Waltons' plans for the property were derailed when their son had a horrific motorcycle accident that resulted in some catastrophic injuries, and that event consumed all of the Waltons' time, energy, and resources. As I'm sure some of the residents of the area are going to probably mention, the building, the pier, the bulkheading, all deteriorated over time. The building also was vandalized, and that results in how the site appears today, which is not an asset to the community. We believe the proposal that we have before you today will remedy that situation. And copies of the minutes of the two conditional use hearings, the minutes of the commission and the council, have been submitted for the record. Now, the minutes of those two applications also mention something unusual. The nineteen ninety-four conditional use minutes state that the land fronts on a twenty-foot private road. And the owner stated, and again, I'm referring to the minutes, the owner stated that there was no record of a road dedication across this property, but he would allow the road to remain open. The minutes of the two thousand and ten conditional use hearings also note that the owner does not propose to close the roadway that runs across the property. So from those minutes, it appears that the land is not two parcels separated by a road, but there is no public road crossing the site. The public road terminates at that point on the property, and then also terminates on the other, to the left, on the other side of the property, yeah, down, yeah, right there. So that's the northeast and the southwest boundaries of the property. So there appears to be no public road connecting the two roads, only a private road, which the owners have permitted to be used by the public. Now, as unusual and perhaps crazy as that sounds, it appears to be confirmed by the county tax map, which shows the site as one contiguous parcel, and the county zoning map, at least the one that I'm pulling up on the mapping online, actually shows those public roads terminating at the property. So I'm not bringing this up to cause alarm, I just want the commission to be aware of what the public record shows. Now, the applicant recognizes that the use of those roads are not only, not only of convenience to the general public, but they also provide access to the Smiths Landing Road, which is a little road to some homes to the, I guess it's to the east, as well as they're used for emergency vehicles when and if needed. So because of that, and to resolve any uncertainty about the status of the road, the site plan was designed, and Jamie, could you put the site plan back? Can you blow up the one to the right? Okay, that's good, thank you. Maybe a little smaller? Get it all in there, okay, thank you. The site plan was designed with the road maintaining its current position on the property, the building being located on the waterfront portion of the site, and the parking and a storage building being located on the northern portion of the site. Additionally, the applicant proposes to pave the private road, the road you see right there, as well as the entrance onto the side road, I forget the name of that. That would be repaved to Sussex County standards, and to note on the final site plan that a perpetual easement is granted to the general public to use the road. Now, those representations are stated in condition L of the proposed conditions that I'll be submitting to you at the end of my presentation. So that would, like I said, it's a very unusual situation, but that would resolve it, that there would be an easement granted to the general public to use that road at that location. Now, as to the existing conditions of the site, the site is bulkheaded, the bulkhead actually wraps around the two corners of the property a short distance. There is an existing pier in a state of disrepair, which, as I said, extends about five hundred feet to the deep water of the Indian River Bay. There's ten boat slips at the end. There's an existing building, Jamie, could you just slide down to the, yeah, the site plan to the left, there. There's an existing building on the site with a front setback from the bulkhead of twenty-six feet, or approximately twenty-six feet. There's a covered porch area extending from the building to the bulkhead, right to the bulkhead. There's also a shed and a dumpster pad located next to the building. The rest of the property is basically vacant, and you can see where a portion of it had previously been used as a gravel parking lot. As I said, the parcel is one contiguous tax map parcel with a private road across it, which I've already mentioned. Going back to the site plan for the proposed building. Can you get that whole thing on there, Jamie? Thank you. First, the existing building that I referred to will be removed. The bulkhead pier and boat slips will be repaired and renovated. Most likely, the pier length would be shortened, but the pier would maintain ten boat slips, and all of that work would be done in accordance with DENREC approvals and permits. The new building would be located on the waterfront portion of the site with a front setback of thirty feet from the bulkhead or the waterfront boundary of the site. That thirty-foot setback is the same setback that was approved by the county for the two thousand and ten conditional use for the restaurant, retail store, and for multifamily unit building. And that setback is greater than the setback of the building that currently exists on the site. The new building would be three stories, not to exceed forty-two feet, which is the existing permitted height of the building. The first floor would have four units, three two-bedroom units, and one one-bedroom unit. The second floor would have four units, and they would all be two-bedroom units, and the third floor would have two units, and they would be, all be four-bedroom units. The one-bedroom unit would contain about eleven-hundred-and-forty-six square feet, the two-bedroom units about thirteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and the four-bedroom units twenty-four-hundred square feet. The building will have an elevator. There'd be an outdoor open space on the bay side of the building with access to the pier, so that would be in front of the building along the waterfront. Each of the ten unit owners would also acquire the right to the exclusive use of one of the designated boat slips. So the boat slips would not be rented to the general public, each owner of a unit would own a boat slip within the condominium. As I stated, the road, the private road would be paved, there'd be a sidewalk on the building side of the road, as shown on that site plan, which I realize you can't see that detail. Parking would be located on the northern portion of the site, north of the private road. Twenty parking spaces are required for the ten units, twenty-five parking spaces are being provided, including two handicap spaces. There would be no on-site or on-road parking permitted on the property, which is all we have any control over, but there'd be no parking permitted on the roadway. At the very north end of the parking area, there'd be a thirty-by-thirty-foot storage building with secure storage areas within the building for each of the ten unit owners. So everyone would have their own storage closet, or whatever you want to call it. In addition, there would be a community storage area for maintenance equipment and community items. Next to the storage building would be a twenty-by-twenty-foot enclosure for trash receptacles. The three sides of the parking area, which are adjacent to properties of other ownership, would have a four-foot-high fence sufficient, solid fence sufficient to block any car headlights from the parking lot onto those properties. The parking area would have minimal, non-intrusive directional lighting, just for safety purposes. Both the building area, as well as the parking area and the area where the storage building is and trash receptacles, would be attractively landscaped, and there would be a detailed landscaping plan submitted as part of the final site plan review. The architectural renderings, Jamie, could you put up the renderings? The architectural renderings show the bay view to the left and the street view to the right. This is the building as proposed to be constructed. We believe it's a very attractive design, and handsome in appearance, that will enhance values of the surrounding properties. These are residential units with an elevator and a boat slip, and are rather obviously going to be a high-end type of residence. These are not going to contribute to workforce housing, these will be high-end units. They're intended to be owner-occupied, but I think, as you know, a part of ownership involves the right to rent or lease your property. What is going to be done is to ensure that there's no short-term rentals, there's going to be a private restriction placed within the condominium documents, restricting rentals to a minimum of one month or more in length. In other words, the condominium will not permit weekly rentals, is what it comes down to. I did not put that in my proposed conditions, because to me, that's really a private restriction, but we have no objection if the commission approves this, if they wanted to include Again, I have for your consideration proposed findings and conditions. And I think I've said enough, I don't want to repeat everything, I just want to ask you to consider three things in making your decision on this, after you've heard the other people who are here to speak. First, the proposed use will replace a deteriorating building, pier, bulkhead, and lot, and it will replace that with an architecturally attractive building with appropriate landscaping and fencing, which we believe will significantly increase property values in the area. So I think if this were approved, it will be a definite improvement to the current situation. Second, the site as designed allows the existing private road to be paved, and a perpetual easement to be granted to the public, and, as I mentioned, that will resolve any uncertainty regarding that road, and more importantly, it will ensure that that road could never be closed by any future owner of the property. And lastly, if you consider that in two thousand and ten, the county determined that this site was appropriate for five residential units, a two-thousand-eight-hundred-foot restaurant with a seven-hundred-foot patio, and a sixteen-hundred-square-foot rental store, in addition to ten boat slips for lease, all this current application we have today before you actually does is substitute five residential units in place of the restaurant and retail store. I mean, that's the net effect of this. And those five residential units, I think you would agree, would have significantly less impact in terms of noise, odors, hours of operation, traffic impact, and the effect on property values than the commercial uses that these residential uses will be replacing. With that, I will conclude our presentation, subject, of course, to any questions you have.
All right, shall we thank you? We'll see if anyone on the commission has any questions for you, and we'll start with Mr. Mears.
Just wrote, I can't say that I've ever seen a property where residents' parking is on the other side of a road. Sounds generous that we're going to leave the road and repave the road, is that to please the other residents of the community surrounding it?
Well, it's, the problem is that road has been allowed to be used by the public, by the prior owners. So it's been used, people are used to using it, and I'd also recognize that it's important, probably for safety reasons, fire trucks, ambulances, things of that nature. There is, like I said, that the little road off of it, that is the only access to that, so those people have an easement or a right to use it anyway. But we thought, because a lot of people think it's a public road, and it's apparently not, and we thought this would clean it up by giving a perpetual easement.
I'm just going to make one other comment. The parking and the setback, it doesn't give me heartburn on a larger roadside, but putting parking that far into the setback by somebody's undeveloped building lot, we're not too fond of that. That's all I have.
Okay, all right. Ms. Winkie?
Yeah, I was just really confused about that access road myself, but I don't have any questions at this time, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Oyster Davidson?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Hopkins?
Same thoughts on that road. It's a double-edged sword, because folks are used to using it, however, you know, the new residents will have to cross it, but it doesn't look like it's a super heavily-traveled road.
I was going to say, this isn't like Route Twenty-four or some other road, this is not high, you know?
I would think the existing property owners would be happy to have the perpetual agreement in place, finally, to make it all go.
Well, we just thought it cleaned it up.
Yeah.
And solved it from being any uncertainty about it.
So basically, then if, did they, was it, what was approved back, whenever it was? So basically, then if, if, did they, was it, what was approved back, whenever it was? Do they still have that, or have they lost that, the five years?
Well, they're both, both of the prior conditional uses have been voided for lack of time.
I was here for both of those. Just barely the first one. That was the first year I was on the commission, nineteen ninety-four. Yeah. Yeah, well.
Does, does, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Does the owner, would the owner have the prerogative to blockade that off? Like, let's, you know, I mean, is it, if he wanted to get out there and do something, have one big house and a big, you know, continual area, could he just put a, 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 I mean, he's got to give the easement to the one alleyway. But could he block it off?
Again, I represent Mr. Lassard, so I don't represent the owner. But I'll deal with this hypothetically, okay? Undoubtedly, there'd be some litigation about something along the line. But the way it stands right now, yes. If, if that's not a public road, then it's a private lane, and that person could close the road. Undoubtedly, there would be a, probably a lawsuit about whether prescriptive rights or what we would call adverse possession. A prescriptive right to use that has been established. However, I would, basic law is, it's got to be adverse and hostile. And if someone's letting you do it, then it's not adverse and hostile. So that person can say, "You can't do it." And that could end it, okay? We've gone out of our way to try to avoid that ever happening, okay? That's exactly what I'm trying not to get into. I don't want to scare anybody here. I don't mean to, to raise it. I want to solve it. That's what we're trying to do.
And, and we do it too. Yeah, we, we do too. I, but not to threaten anybody or anything else. But, but it is nice to, to have a, a general landscape idea of what, I mean, if they can't do this, then that option might, might, might be more at the surface, so anyway.
Well, as I said, I, the, this application, and this applicant is who I represent. This is what they're proposing, and, and that's what we have before you. No other questions? Anything?
Not for me, thank you.
Just to add to the road. I, I remember this came up when the county was putting sewer out in Ogorchard. Because the county has basically what's called a franchise agreement with DelDOT. And so you can put sewer lines in, you know, wherever DelDOT's right-ofways are under that agreement with DelDOT. My recollection, and that goes back away, so I'm not sure it's a hundred percent, is just what Mr. Fuquay said, though, that this was essentially a private lot. And so the county had to get an easement for some portion of that to connect those homes on what that is, Smiths Lane, you know, and then to kind of connect through there. So I don't know where the pipes are specifically in there, but I think they're probably consistent where that roadway is anyways. But it's not, it's not a DelDOT road, you know, like everybody has said. And I know it was a mess then. It's a mess now.
It's messy. It's messy.
Yeah, to get it resolved. That's all. I don't know how helpful that was, just some history on it. It was, it's been, it's been festering for a while with that road. Everybody assumes it's a road, and it's not.
Well, this proposal would clean that up, I think. It's always difficult when somebody is using your property, somebody else is using your property. If they use it long enough without you complaining.
Yeah, and it, I mean, and not.
It can be hard to take that right away from them at that point.
Right. And I don't know that they would have the right to the road in that exact location. Like, I don't know that the people, and I'm just saying this hypothetically. Like, the people, Smiths Lane would have the right for it to connect all the way through or just to have the right of access, you know? Rightly or wrongly, this would, you know, as far as the land use side of it, it would clear things up.
Yeah. Just a curious question about the floor plan. I thought I heard you mention that there was going to be an elevator.
Right.
I don't see it anywhere on.
Yeah, you won't see it on there. It originally wasn't planned. But Mr. Lassard spoke with some people and basically was told that he was crazy if he wouldn't put an elevator in there. So he's, he's, the design's going to remain the same, but obviously there'll have to be some alterations for an elevator. I was looking, I was looking for it myself.
Yeah, I was just talking, you mentioned it. I started looking for it. Okay, thank you. If you could, if you could sit nearby, was there anyone here of an interest in your application? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of conditional use number twenty-three forty-nine Lassard builders? In favor? Yes, sir? Are you in favor, sir?
I'm personally in favor as a property owner.
Okay.
Also useful for Indian River Fire Company.
All right.
I'd like to know which way she would like to, to propose. But first, I'm Patrick Miller, president of Indian River Fire Company. And I have the lots on twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Okay.
But I'm going to add some more confusion to the, the discussion about the road. Mr. Robertson is correct. The sewer does go under that road. And this road, this has been a roadway since the early seventies, possibly late sixties, early seventies, when the old river house, the village dock restaurant. And what was referred earlier as the vacant lot was the parking lot for the restaurant business. Okay? So the road has always went through there. But I do concur with two things that Mr. Fuquay said in that we can't find where it's deeded. And if you look at some, you can see where the property lines end. But as of last week, DelDOT says it's a road. So I don't think they honestly know what's going on in this area. So our other concern there is the width, roadway width on Ogorchard Avenue. And, and in all these documents, Ogorchard Avenue and Ogorchard Road are synonymous. But this is actually Ogorchard Avenue, okay? But if you come down Ogorchard Avenue from Delaware Avenue, and I think that was the, the southeast section Mr. Fuquay spoke about, that road really ends before Smith Landing. So Smith Landing parcels would be completely landlocked in terms of getting access or not. Now, from the fire company's standpoint, we have a grave concern because Ogorchard Avenue is only a twenty-foot road width. That's from what DelDOT tells us, that's the road width. So we're, we're instrumental in the fact that we would like to continue with the cessation of any parking on Ogorchard Avenue in either capacity from the Delaware Avenue Road or the Ogorchard Road because of apparatus getting by. And I addressed four concerns, and, and just bear with me as I get nervous and go through this. The, the concerns that we put forth from the fire company are as, as follows. When we look at the fire protection, fire protection side, as, as was stated, Ogorchard is not a hydrant community. Now, we are being told, well, we know, the nearest hydrant is at Chief's Road and Ogorchard Road, which is about a mile and a quarter down the road. That's where the largest water main ends. From there on down, we are being told from the fire suppression side that the water main or the water pipes are not sufficient to hydrate that area. They've told us for years that they're going to upgrade that, but it has never materialized. Even at the firehouse, we do not have a hydrant or a fill station. We had to put our own pumping, our own well and our own pumping station there to fill the apparatus. So it is still our belief that there is no reasonable water suppression system that would accommodate any of this flow. And that's why when we addressed that, that, that situation, we suggested the development of a dry hydrant with what they're telling me is an intake below the normal low tide mark. But if that is something that materializes, it would have to be something that is perpetually maintained and operated because of the sediment filling in and, and the pipes. We've had some experience with these types of systems at Massy's Landing campground. And they constantly get filled in, are no longer productive. So that's why we have to bring in the, the water for, for the trucks. The other concern that we wanted to address, we're very pleased to hear that they're having sprinklers. That's a substantial concern, is the fact that this parcel been here, done that kind of thing. Back in the eighties, when it caught on fire, well, actually, that, number six did not. The parcels on number four caught on fire. And they were two-story houses right on the waterfront. We could not really gain access to them with aerial apparatus because of the overhead wires. So not only does the water in the sewer go through that, the overhead wire runs very consistent with that roadway too. And when trucks, when trucks get lost and come down, and when I say tractor-trailer trucks, they have pulled the wires, the telephone wires, new shiltie wires from the Ogorchard Avenue to the Smiths Landing properties down. Now, they've never, the telephone company didn't have to address it because, you know, the, the obsolescence of, of the telephone. But there are still issues there with low-hanging wires. We don't know what can be done. But this parcel is not easily accessible for any sizable apparatus that would address a three-story building. Aerial apparatus can't be used because of the, the high-intensity wires and so on and so forth. So we wanted to address that concern. And then the other ones that we wanted to address, and I did address it in, in my, in my communication, is the fact that this parcel, the water runoff, runs down to Ogorchard Road and River Road intersection. No intention of the property owner, and God bless Mr. Lassard because he's trying to batter the community. The previous property owners haven't. But they have not done anything to mitigate the, the rain-water runoff. Because this parcel is nothing to do with tidal flooding. It's, it's high enough and so on and so forth. But I think others will, will address their concern there. But the water does run down the street to the only drain that goes out to the river, which is at Ogorchard Road and River Road. So even at a heavy rain, the, heavy rain and high tide, the road still floods. What can be done? I don't know. But what I'm saying is, the firehouse has to stay neutral. We don't oppose and we don't support. But we say any of these situations can be addressed and ameliorated with, with planning and, and those efforts. And we hope that we can achieve this. Now, I will tell you, as Mr. Fuquay said, these two gentlemen, the, the current property owner and the anticipated property owner, have, have expressed no concern to close that road. Previous property owners have threatened to close the road. Didn't go very well. It never materialized. Actually, he's no longer the property owner, and that may be for a reason. But that has always been a concern, and what the real answer is, I don't know. But that's really our concerns that we wanted to, to identify. When we talk about the, the fire suppression system, tidewater will, as they say, will maintain with existing infrastructure, we're here to tell you the existing infrastructure is grossly insufficient. Having lived on Ogorchard Road and utilized it, I can tell you, we, sometimes when we have an alarm at Long Neck Road and, and Banks Road School Lane, when we access their hydrants, we, they run dry. They burn up the motors because they can't accommodate the, the water flow. And that's very similar to, with having none. So we have to find other resources to bring in, bring in the water. And these, the widths of these roads do not allow apparatus to stage side by side. They must be parallel. And that's problematic when you have an issue down Smith Landing Road. And I want to say this, nothing to do with these gentlemen. Smith Landing Road, we have difficulty getting the F-350 down there. The, the other day when we were riding and giving tours, it's very hard to get in. So turning apparatus, coming in off of Delaware Avenue into there, I don't know how they're going to turn to make it. But some of those parcels back there, the, the first couple of houses are fairly large, two stories. But you get that down, and they're, they're manufactured homes. But manufactured homes tend to burn a lot faster than, than wood, wood homes. So that is a concern, and that, that's what I wanted to say today on behalf of the fire company.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have tank trucks that you bring in?
We do have tank trucks, and we also rely on mutual aid tankers as well. So Millsboro and Lewis.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
I have a question for their team.
Yeah, if you'd like to go ahead.
Okay, and this might be from Mr. Crouch. Is there any conversation that's been started with any of the public utilities for burying the existing overhead?
I mean, for the record, Jack Prosecutes, when it for now, yeah, we've spoken with tidewater. And, you know, we're definitely going to have to install a fire pump into the dwelling to make sure that, you know, the pressure stays consistent as well as the duration. So, I mean, that's, I think the existing restaurant that's there now has a fire pump and also sprinkler system. So that's typically what happens when you don't have hydrants in the area. And then the dry hydrant, as the gentleman just mentioned, I mean, that's, we do that on other projects, so.
Okay. And then the other part of my question was the overhead utilities he was mentioning. Have you had any conversation with the public utilities about getting this buried?
No, but I would think that it would be in the best interest to bury those. And typically, on new projects, I mean, ninety-nine percent of the time, that's what happens.
Yeah.
Because there's going to be a new transform that's going to be involved, and they're going to put everything underground.
I would encourage you to do that after listening to him.
Again, on the water, is the, is the incoming water, is there enough water to the site to, I mean, is your pump going to collapse the pipes when it comes on?
No, it, it, the size of the pipes between six and four inch. So based on some, you know, rough numbers, we've done it down to four inches for in schools.
Yeah.
So until we get pressure tests and, but, you know, the, the fire pumps usually, you know, ninety percent of the time, will allow that, and will keep up with it. But there again, just for the record, too, we have to go back, we have to get fire marshal approval for the building as well as the site before anything can happen. So if for some reason.
We're just the first stop on the trip.
Yeah. So if for some reason, it, you know, because they, you know, for fire pumps and for fire flows that require for the checklist for the fire marshal's office, it has to meet the requirements. If not, then you got to look at either a separate storage area to stores water. So there's a number of things that need to happen. But there again, based on some preliminary numbers, we feel it's, it can work with a fire pump.
And one more question. Your stormwater management, I assume, is going to be under the parking lot?
Yes, sir. That's correct. And as Mr. Fuquay stated, there's nothing out there now. So we'll just, you know, there again, we'll meet the requirements, you know, storage, which is going to help the, the problems that were identified previously.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Forgot where it was. Are we done?
Speaking in favor, I think.
Oh, yeah. Speaking in favor, okay. Anybody else that wants to speak in favor? Does anyone like speaking opposition to this application? Speaking in opposition, we'll start all the way over here on this side, then we'll come over to this side. Jump back and forth until everybody's had a chance.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Alan Miller. I'm about thirty-some, a resident of the area. My wife grew up, born and raised, right there in the Ogorchard, Riverdale area. And if you don't know why I had to say Riverdale, you don't know the area over there. I've been pastor in the area there at a church adjacent to the fire company for the past thirty-two years. If you are at all aware of Ogorchard, there are systemic flooding issues that for all these years, no one has been able to come up with a reasonable way to keep that from happening. When the river decides to come see us at church, it comes to see us at church. It's done that a number of times. We've had times, and I'm also a firefighter. I happen to be a Miller, Patrick, and I're not related. We just happen to have the same last name. But there have been times when we've had to sandbag the firehouse, which is approximately a quarter of a mile from the river. Ogorchard is one of the areas in the county that really has serious flooding issues. When that happens, we work carefully with the fire company. Every so many years, the fire company has a very large army-style truck that we have purchased and we use to help folks get out when they didn't get out when they should have. Always happens. I usually ask them, "How long have you lived here?" And they say, "Well, about four years." I say, "Well, that's why you didn't know to get out." But what we typically do, particularly if it's a county-wide storm and there are serious things going on up and down the coast, in the meantime, while places are being established for refuge for us an amount of time, we are not, at our church, equipped for overnight. So what we tend to do is, if our company brings folks who have to get out to our church, we take care of them for a few hours to, you know, throughout the day until they can either contact someone who comes and helps them or until they can be taken to a different, more permanent rescue area. One of the issues is, when that happens, folks tend to bring their cars to the church. And they park them there. They say, "Can we bring our car? We don't want to leave it near the water." They bring it to us because generally that gives them enough time where if they have to do something more, they can do that without waking up and finding that their car's underwater. Our parking is limited. And at that point, if it is that serious, parking at the fire company is very limited. And the areas that we generally use in dry weather are very limited. We also have an issue of folks who don't ask. They just come and leave the car and go. We also have an issue of folks who don't ask, they just come and leave the car and go away, and I find the car, you know, in the parking lot. And the result of that is that when the fire company is utilizing their apparatus to bring people there, dropping them off, there's very limited access at times to the church and to the parking lot with larger pieces of equipment. That can be a problem. Adding ten units with the assumption that between ten and twenty vehicles, all told, would add a fair number of vehicles to that scenario. Again, it's not a constant thing, but it happens. The density in the Oak Orchard area, particularly in that exact location, tends to be a little higher than normal. Now, back in the sixties and early seventies, you could go there and you could buy a lot. Those lots were generally a hundred by fifty. The church now sits on a parcel that is made up of twelve lots and, from the old Bocham estate. And much of the area in Oak Orchard has homes that are very, on very small lots. That means there's almost no parking anywhere. Though, all those roads back there go back many years to where the roads didn't need to be so large. There's also, because of the area, tends to be lower income than pretty much anywhere around the river. And that means that a lot of younger families who struggle tend to live there. And sometimes the children are not as well overseen as they could be. You have a lot of bicycle traffic, and having bicycle back there with my grandchildren, traffic is a big issue. When Del Dot says traffic will be minimal, it might be on Route 24, it might be on Oak Orchard Road, but in that immediate area, twenty extra vehicles, it may be more of an impact than, than other places. The church and the fire company are basically at a place where, the fire company added on a few years back, we could not sprinkler the fire company, because last I heard, the water line going up Oak Orchard Road is four inches. You can't sprinkler. A fire hydrant has a six-inch, that's a six-inch water line. And the hoses the fire company uses are six-inch hoses. You can't pull six inches out of a four-inch water line. And so, as Patrick had shared, those concerns have been known for a long time, and we've been told over and over again that they would be mitigated, but they have yet to be. That along with the persistent flooding, the access to emergency vehicles, the number of young children on narrow, what would be considered back streets, pretty much in anywhere else in the county, creates some issues that I think need to be considered. I appreciate very much your time.
All right, thank you. Okay, who's next? Take one from this side? Anybody over here? Anybody over here? If you'd like to go? You want to let him go? All right, come on, somebody come up here. There we go.
Gentlemen, ladies, my name is Kurt Hepler, and I've already submitted comments through your, your portal. It appears to be some redundancy because it wouldn't allow an upload of the document that I had, so I'm bringing the actual document with wet signatures on here because the signatures couldn't be there. I'm also presenting the one from my next-door neighbor, who wasn't able to be here because of having to be at work during the afternoon, so.
And we'll make sure they get to be part of this work.
Thank you. The, the other issue that I brought up, and I, I uploaded that today just in plain text, was that you don't have a deficiency within your zoning ordinance for this type of, of structures, for this type of use. So the, as it appears, it would be much more suitable to have it in the C4 district than to have it in the MR district. So it's not like you don't have C4, and, okay, well, I got to get a conditional use to, to do it over here. Well, yeah, you have C4, you've already provided for that. It's just that the developer decides, well, he'd like to, to do something a little different, and he's asking you all to help him out with that. In reviewing the packet, I see no hardship. They're, they don't present a hardship that you should be respons, responding to. And often that's the case when you go to conditional use, it's because you have hardship. So anyway, I'd like to add that to the comments that I already have here, and I'm going to ask you to please not approve this application. Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Okay, yes, sir, come on. There we go.
Hi, I'm Oliver Brittingham, and I'm, I want to discuss some of the things that Jim said, Fuquay. I remember the Red Motel. I remember when he tore it down and built this other thing, that's the Wakecap now, and I've lived down there since, six, fifty-seven. I've been through the storm of sixty-two. I've been through Sandy, and all the time it floods down there. Now, with them building these townhouses down there, which they're projected to build, you can build them up far enough, high enough, they'll stay out of the water. But my concern is the safety of the people, getting them out of there, to make sure they're safe to get out. The water, that place down there floods on a heavy rain, and, and it does flood otherwise as well. And with the cars and the blacktop and the stuff, I don't know how it's going to be improving the flooding in that area. Now, my understanding, at the time, DAMERAC, they took a survey down there, and at that time, to correct that area of flooding was around fifteen million. Now, since then, I'm assuming, well, as you know, prices are going up, so I'm assuming it's probably about fifteen...
Probably thirty now.
Yeah, you're right. To try to correct the problem. If they would correct the problem down there of getting rid of this flooding area, especially with the people that are coming down, they're going to see a beautiful, a beautiful river. They say, "Isn't this beautiful?" You know, but they don't realize it can turn evil and go the other way. And my concern is the safety of the people and the flooding, so.
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Margaret Hurt. I live in seventy-four oh-one, and my cousin owns thirty, so we're right on the property border there. What concerns me the most is the parking that's going to be right up by those residences and the noise. That is a very quiet area right now with another twenty to thirty cars coming down there and no parking on the road, so if you have a visitor that's coming to your condo, if they're not parking in space one or two, where are they parking? So that's my concern about the safety for the area, and maybe it could just be a smaller down project, not so big, you know what I mean? It, it's a great idea, they'll build the area up, but I think ten units is just too, too many. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, who's next?
Well, again, Mike Mashandaro.
Thank you.
You know, when somebody comes in, I mean, if you've seen this property, if you look at it, you go, something's got to be done with this thing because it's so, it's been horrible. I think one of the, the basic sentiments that the public has, at least, at least I do, of being a residence down there, is that twelve years ago, there was a meeting just like this with a nice proposal that was put forth to do something there, and many residents came up in opposition, saying, you know, "You shouldn't do this, you shouldn't do that, you know, it's not going to happen," and, you know, all these kind of problems. And here we sit, twelve years later, and the place is a disaster. The pier has boards blowing off of it. I, I get those boards underneath my, my pier every storm. And that conditional use that was approved, that was, I don't have my glasses here, eighteen sixty-three, had stipulations and the conditions in the conditional use that said that the owner will comply with state and, and county regulations. Hasn't been done, we've complained about that to DENREC. DENREC says this was built and grandfathered before that time. So we get stuck sometimes in these kind of situations because we're like, wait a minute, you know, I thought, you know, if we approved the conditional use, and there's these conditions in it, that there'll be some teeth in trying to keep the property nice and so forth. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of apprehension, apprehension as a result of that. Just, I, I have some notes I was taking as I was hearing some people, and, and just to comment, the electric situation. Somebody mentioned put it underground, where there's primaries running right, right smack through Oak Orchard Avenue, straight down Smith Landing Road down the Mercer Avenue. You can't put primaries underground, especially where, a place where the water table's like literally four feet below the grade, just, just as a piece of information. I, I would like to understand why ten units there. I mean, the whole road only has eight houses, so that whole road that goes around there, you can start counting them. I mean, there's not that many people that, that actually access that road. That, that is a road that is usually done by people walking their dogs and kids and so forth. This will more than double the, the amount of people living on that road in a concentrated area. I think that's something to consider, like, why ten?
No, he's, the applicant is not entitled to ten, he's entitled to ask for ten, so he's asking for ten. I don't know. I'm sure he's asking for all that, all that can be permitted, I mean, that's what most of them do.
Right. But I, I understand the argument they made, saying, hey, before we had five, plus a restaurant, so we'll trade the five at the restaurant for five more units here. That never happened, right? Never happened as a result, and it's very, it's, like I said, it's, it's nice that somebody wants to come to do something about the pier. I wish DENREC would be able to enforce what apparently you would think they had cudgel to go help keep the, the bay clean. So, you know, I, I would ask that, that the previous conditional uses had a set of conditions, that they, that those be carried forward. It's a good set of conditions in there. And in addition, you know, address what you do when you have development. If, if you're going to be approving this thing, do what you do in other areas and, and get some road improvements on Oak Orchard Avenue. It's very, very narrow. Right now, you, two, two cars can't really go down that road, especially along the area there that goes toward Delaware Avenue. People have to, you know, drive on the properties.
Are they Del Dot's or they...
Are they Del Dot's streets or they town streets? Just curious.
This is, if, if you take a look at, I was trying to look this up, and I couldn't find it again. Del, Del Dot has an online portal that shows you...
They're Del Dot's streets.
They're Del Dot's streets.
So it would be their authority to require the developer to do it.
You could tell, you could tell you this, they, they do snowplow this, this road.
Oh, then they are Del Dot's.
It's not the first road that they snowplow, certainly.
And it wouldn't be us, it wouldn't be us requiring those improvements on the roadways, it would be Del Dot requiring the developer to do it.
Okay, but that's part of this process though, right?
Not the Del Dot review.
Del Dot has to do that, we really can't require them.
But, but they, yes, it's part of the process.
But, but, yes, it's part of the entire development process, yes, it's another piece. Our, this, this piece we're doing right now is just sort of the very beginning. They're seeking permission to do the project. If they are fortunate enough to get permission to do the project, that's when the real fund starts.
Right.
That's when they have to go to, to about fourteen, I think it's fourteen or seventeen different agencies now that have something to say about what happens there.
Right. Is that the same with the pier? I had a note to myself, what, you know, how, how can you, you know, agree to do something like this and actually compel the owner and to...
I'm surprised DENREC is not involved.
DENREC has completely, look, I mean, they may, I hope they're not listening, I don't mean to disparage DENREC, but, but, but they, they have basically washed their hands of this. They said the original, the original permit that, that pier, it's a five, a five-hundred-foot pier, it was before the permitting process, they did not permit it, therefore they can't enforce it, even though the conditional use...
They can't regulate it because they didn't issue a permit.
Right.
It seems like if it's become an obstruction or it's deteriorated, regardless of the permit, they would have, I don't know.
You would think so, and I've been, I've talked to our state representatives and...
I recommend that you call your state representative.
I've, believe me, they know me by name. As a matter of fact, they get the email from me, and they're like, oh, jeez, we...
There's one right here in the audience.
Until about ten o'clock, when you know he's home, you know.
Well, we have a new, a new local rep now.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ruth, Ruth Briggs King is, she's, I mean, we've worked together very well.
I know, it's a difficult issue, and unfortunately, it's not one that we can help you with.
Yeah, the pier, the pier doesn't have lights on, it's, you can think about that. The pier sticks out five hundred feet into the Indian River Bay, and at night, it's a hazard in navigation. I've been there, and I only know it's there because of the track where I went last time shows that I went around the pier. So those, those are the kind of things that when you're going to be doing something new and you're going to, you know, ask the public to be positive of this and do things that, hey, let's, let's turn a page and have something that, that there's some teeth into. Let me just read through this. I'll make it quick because I know it's getting late. I, I think that's, that's pretty much everything I had here, but I, I really, I really appreciate the time.
Yes, sir.
And, and by the way, I'd just like to say, it's very interesting seeing this process. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on in Sussex County, and everybody talks about it. It sounds like you're just rubber stamping all this stuff all the time, and I know you're not, and I know there's a deliberate process that you're going through, and I, I just want to say I appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir, come on up.
How are you all doing this evening?
Good, how about you?
Good, thank you. Harry Jarman, my wife Jody.
Hi, Jody.
We're in one thirteen, right across from where the dumpster would be. But the primary concern for me was the safety issue, and by all the other circumstances have been conveyed, so most of them covered, there's two hundred single-family units north on Oak Orchard Road that are being done as we speak, in addition to the units that are trying to be put in where we are. So that's a lot of traffic, and a lot of these people are going to want to take their kayaks or whatever and come out of their house and shoot down to the water to see the water. And while somebody had mentioned it's not a heavily traffic, heavily traveled road, it is. We get people all the time looping around Oak Orchard and going back out or stopping right in front of the house, looking in the windows, so traffic will definitely increase on that twenty-foot road. We've seen the guide wires turn, torn down on the corner house with Mike. There would have to be a waste management or a republic front-end loader come in to take that dumpster out in that very tight quarter parking lot. So that's going to be very dangerous for them to try to get in there and get out. And obviously, there is a major concern with the dumpster position where it is right across from our unit, because I've, I've been in the tire business, worked for, you know, waste management before, and dumpsters are not very clean, and they don't smell very good, so that's a major concern. That's pretty much all I had, most of everything else was covered. My wife, I'm sure, has a few words as well.
I have things.
We are an advocate of the aesthetics of a new building, though, I mean, that is, that strikes our fancy, so that's, that is a good thing. Can appreciate that.
So just a couple additional points, like my husband said, most of the things have been covered, so I was, apologized for the phone, but I wasn't really going to say a whole lot. So the road, Oak Orchard Road, Oak Orchard Avenue, whatever you want to call it, right now, it only safely allows one car to go. I mean, two can go, but one would generally need to go into someone's yard or, you know, kind of the passing thing, so that's a major concern for me, in addition to the children on their bikes, people walking their dogs, you know, we have a wiener dog, so it's kind of a very quaint community, so just having that extra two-way traffic pass is going to be something that would be a huge adjustment for us. There's already, we talked about the infrastructure, but there's already a pothole, like if you look, kind of like one eighteen where the easement is, there's a large pothole, there's kind of a mailbox area there, but everyone is literally in, in one seventeen, like kind of in his yard, just trying to not go through that pothole. So already on that corner, you know, it's, it's very deteriorated, so that would definitely need to be fixed. Marge covered some of the things with the noise in the parking lot. I don't particularly want to be woken up by somebody who has a Harley or a really cool, you know, murderhead car at seven... you know, murderhead car at seven AM and be jolted out of my bed. So, that is definitely a concern. And then, my husband covered the dumpster, and there's two hundred and twelve actually homes being built right down. The flooding is definitely an issue. We're kind of locked in, so if you talk about the corner, if you, so if you were to go to the left of that, you can't even get down River Road because that will flood. Yep, if you try to go down River Road. And then Delaware Avenue, where it's Orchard and Delaware, that will flood. Like, you're stuck. Like, when those floodwaters come, you're just going to hook it down and watch the movies because you're not getting out. So, that would be a huge concern, and all of the other great points that were presented, you know, we're not, no one's going anywhere until, in fact, we're kind of on the high elevation, so we will have our neighbors way back in Mercer, truck their cars and stuff and park where he's wanting to put that parking lot, because they know when they call for heavy rains and winds and things like that, they will bring their cars to the higher elevation across from us, you know. So, it's, that's definitely an issue. So, I just wanted to say, you know, before you make a decision, if you could kindly, like, just drive into our community, because we're a really quaint, secluded community. So, if I say to you, like, I live in Tank's House, like, that's not going to mean a whole lot maybe to you, but it's going to mean everything to anyone here that's left, because we all know each other really well. And I really hope you take all of these thoughts into consideration and concerns, and thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, who's next? Anybody left? One wants, wife? Okay, operator, is there anybody standing?
Hi, this is Cindy Battle and David Harper, and we are the folks on Smith's Landing that you've been referring to. A couple things that I wanted to just ask about. I've heard ten boat slips. I've also heard twenty. Are there ten or twenty? I don't think there's room for twenty, but I just wanted to ask that question. I'm very excited about the property getting fixed and, and, it looks like it's going to be absolutely beautiful. However, the electric that you mentioned, I don't know if it was Mike or somebody, but mentioned it, that hole that covers the transformer for that building is on our property. So, it's actually located on our property. And I think Patrick mentions it was knocked down and all, our electric came off of the house. You know, it is a problem. The electric is a problem along that whole area for all of us. And it starts at our home, and the transformer has gone out, and when that house was occupied, the rental property before, it, it went out too. So, I think we're combined there somehow, and if there's anything we could do with the electrical, I think that's going to need to happen so that we don't have any problems. The other thing I noticed is the roadway and where you're going to pave it. Well, we've got pavers at our home as well, but it appears that the, yeah, with the asphalt pavement, is that what you're talking about? It probably is. We have, we have actual pavers. The paver for the little cottage, which is thirty-two, seven-eighty, Oak Orchard Road, is also our property. And the, the pavers for our parking go directly to that road, but it appears that there's something that was going to be put in, in the drawing that would avoid going, it was like it, it goes on our property that, that we use right now. So, I don't know how that's going to work. I will tell you that the surveys in that area do not match. The survey we had done for our cottage doesn't match the next-door neighbor's survey company, and we both lost five feet. So, it's very odd, the surveying in that area is not, that doesn't match. So, that's a concern of mine. The final one that I have is if the property ground is going to be razed, if you're bringing in tons of dirt to raise it any higher, any kind of flooding that would run off to our property, which is located right next door. You know, I saw a ten-foot setback, and then it looks like you're going to have an area in the front of the property. And we are right next door, and, you know, I, I welcome the improvement. There's no question. I welcome the improvement. But those are some of the concerns, which may not be a real big issue for correction. David, did you have any?
Yeah, just, excuse me. Categorically, this household approves what Brian LaSard is doing. I think it's going to be a great project. I think it'll help everybody.
Sir, I need you to introduce yourself in your own voice, please.
I'm sorry?
I need you to introduce yourself in, in your voice, please.
My name is David Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Go ahead.
Okay, I am concerned about the road width. It goes from a twenty-foot width on the, the, what is that name? It's Oak Orchard Road. Yeah, Oak Orchard Road is twenty feet, and then it narrows down to seventeen in front of our property. And then it becomes wide again as, as the road proceeds west. We, we have a hard time sometimes getting into our property with a truck or a vehicle with a boat trailer. I'm concerned about if there's going to be enough room for us to go in and, and back into our back part of our property with these trailers. The other thing is that that seventeen-foot road with, it shows like a three-foot, maybe four-foot wide of grassy area, maybe a landscape berm. I'm not quite sure what it shows. That, that has always been an issue of, of what's going to happen there. Our driveway goes actually out to the asphalt, and I, I can't imagine why putting an area there in grass would be better than putting it in asphalt as it is today. So, that's one of our concerns.
I thought of one more thing. We also, again, living right next door, we, we will do the overflow parking for a lot of the folks there. So, we, we know that that would most likely be an issue. We know that there's probably nothing we can do about it. So, we're going to have to mark the area so that, you know, we can get in and out of our property and, and be able to continue to live there. But again, I do like what you're doing. I, those are the couple of things. I don't know if you can, if you can, if you can, to go over a little bit more or the counties for the, for the, again, I think the electric is another big issue that we, but, so those were the things I was concerned about. And thank you for taking our call.
We thank you very much.
Nineteen ninety-four conditional use had twenty boat slips. The two thousand and ten conditional use had ten boat slips, and there were permits issued for ten boat slips. As far as I know, it's still a valid permit. That's what we're proposing.
Okay, thank you. All right, operator, is there anyone else standing by who would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Zip Coley. I live at B two seven eight, Oak Orchard Road. And I, I also appreciate what you're trying to do to improve the area. I do agree with others that units is too large because of the amount of traffic and the issues that we bring with it. So, I object to the number of units. I object to the project, just the number of units. I can speak from personal experience and the lines on our house, you know, trucks have passed by, and literally ripped electric lines from our house, damaging our fascia and our property, and it could have been a very dangerous situation. We weren't home at the time, but, you know, that's happened. And also, because of how narrow the roads are, we had, our trucks come and tear up the front part of our yard, just because there's not room for, for vehicles to pass. So, what happens is that they, they hit your, your property or they run through it in damage or debris. It's unsafe in terms of if we had been there to, to have it happen. But luckily, in those situations, we haven't been there, but very easily it could happen. And it happened to anyone along the road because of how narrow the roads are, because of the low hanging power lines. So, I just wanted to let you know from personal experience, from someone who's been affected by those situations, the traffic through here is not designed to carry a lot of people. So, really, ten, ten more families with, and the twenty more cars and visitors coming, there isn't even room now for the people that are here to have, there's no way to park. There's no room on the side of the road for two cars to pass each other. So, I just wanted to bring those up, and some real experiences.
All right, we thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions or comments?
Yeah.
Okay, there being none, we'll close the public hearing. For those of you who are not going to remain with us, I would ask that if you're going to leave, if you would do so quickly and very quietly, because your, your instinct is going to be you're going to want to stand up and start talking, and it happens every time, okay? Preservation Company LLC, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Carrie, thank you. Lassard Builders.
Shoot.
Yeah. Now, there was a gentleman on this commission one time by the name of Jim Phillips. Mr. Phillips's favorite phrase was, "This looks like ten pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag."
How do you thought this? We talk about that when people are trying to put these McMansions on these little postage stamps. We use that same analogy. I don't like the density. I don't like the parking where they have to cross the street. I don't like the parking in the setback on a residential building lot. It's different when it's commercial. I guess I just don't like it.
I'm not crazy about the height.
The height, the whole gig.
Well, we can't talk about the height because it's permitted.
Within limits.
But I will say, I mean, some of the things they said, I've, I've been involved, and I'm, and I am as bad as maybe as anybody can be on building, but I know that the, they're going to have to have a, a well to add to the water to make the sprinklers work.
Or a tank.
Yeah.
The problem, and that problem that I see with this is the site is completely maxed out.
Yeah.
There's no place to put a tank right now. I mean, it's really a tough site. I mean, it's just, you know, now, and counsel, you jump in if I'm not right about this. The current zoning is MR. He's entitled to three units. He could get, because it's four of the acre, right? So, it's point eight four. So, he could get three units, but doesn't even have to come here. He just needs to go get a...
Well, three lots he could get if they fit. You still have to come in for the, for the multifamily.
Okay, well, yeah, okay. All right, then. Well, I'm just saying that the current zoning is not, is a little, it's more dense than AR. So, it's more dense than AR.
Right.
And we probably do have the ability to say not ten, but you can have six.
That changes all a lot.
So, if you don't want to say, it's not, doesn't have to be a yes or a no. You can give them, you know, you can land somewhere in between if you think, plus, some of the other considerations we can handle by stipulation. I don't think you could stipulate anything that won't cause them to have to build less units, because they're maxed out so much. If you took parking out of the setback, they're not going to have enough parking, so they're going to have to cut their number of units. So, if you, you know, it's not a, it's, it's, it's not a yes or a no, if you want to put in the time to, you know, in the effort. I would just say that to you. I, I would be okay with some kind of compromise.
I remember being down there, walking to my car with no shoes on because the water was up to my knees, so, yeah.
I mean, they're right about that, the water. And it's always interesting how the folks don't realize that we actually go look at these places. They talk to us like we've never been there, you know. But I understand. They, how, what do they know? They don't know what we do.
It sounded like the neighbors would be okay if it was something different, because they're looking for an improvement.
Here's the other thing that concerns me. If you look at it, it's two four-bedroom units up top, okay? And then eight two-bedroom units. It's way more than twenty people.
I was going to say, the parking is going to, it's already...
It's way more than twenty people, potentially. And I don't know that there's enough parking there for what's really going to happen. And there's no place else for anybody to park.
They said they had twenty spaces required, twenty-five.
Five extra or something. Yeah, they had five extra somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean...
But still, if you've got...
And I get that's what the answer's going to be. They're going to say, well, we meet the code. You really can't beat us up on that. Yeah, I don't know.
But if there's four bedrooms and there's four adults living in there...
They're not all coming in one car.
That's right.
You know, that's, so, that's the whole point.
Could be four different cars.
Could be four different cars, but it's four bedrooms. I'm willing to bet that it's could be, I know, because, you know, that's how people do it.
Yeah, we've got three cars at my house, and there's only two of us there, so, yeah.
So, this one's going to take some work. Who's, who's the leader? Oh, this is you. Look at you. All right, well, congratulations.
Glad you were here, sir.
Do you have your motion ready tonight?
Yes, I certainly do. You just made it.
There you go. Good for you.[1780.62]